Good morning, everyone. Thank you ever so much for sharing your Saturday morning and your interest in helping to prevent what is an ongoing and growing problem in Oregon: wage theft. And I want to thank each and every one of you personally for, as I say, sharing your Saturday morning with us to kick off this conference. We have three hosts this morning. All of us are state representatives, and we are very pleased and proud to be able to tell you that we are the first town hall in the Oregon State Legislature of 2013 session. Thank you. I'm State Representative Brad Witt, and I'm from House District 31. My district lies from north of Highway 26 up to the Columbia County, so I kind of have the northernmost regions of Washington County and Columbia County, and a little strip of Melnoma County along Highway 30 that goes out to Sophie's Island. I am so pleased that I have two of my colleagues that have been able to join me here, and two of my colleagues who I am so proud to say have taken upon themselves not only to win seats in Washington County, but also to be champions of workers and workers' issues: Ben Hunger and Joe Gallegos. Thank you so much. It has just been entirely exciting to have watched the two of them win the election that they did in this section of Washington County that they represent. And I'm going to turn it over to them for a very brief self-introduction before we have a film to kick this off. Following the film, we're going to have a panel discussion, and we have several folks who have been involved in wage theft, some of them actually victims of wage theft. And after that, we will have a discussion as your three hosts, and we hope to be able to engage the audience in that discussion as well. With that, briefly turn it over to Representative Hunger.
Thank you, Representative. Hi, my name is Ben Hunger, and I am State Representative for House District 29, which is downtown Hillsborough, Amelia's and Porch Grove, southwest in the Old and South. As Representative Whitworth Sustaina, just recently elected, just recently sworn in on Monday, so a lot of what I'm looking forward to, I still haven't experienced yet for the first time, so I'm looking forward to learning more about wage theft. My committee assignments are all in the natural resources and agricultural area, so I come to this discussion with a keen interest in figuring out how wage theft impacts the agricultural community and the migrant community. I was just talking to Jim here before we got started about migrant protection. We think, my great uncle Pat, who used to have a migrant camp back in the 60s, it sounds like he did a pretty good job of being open and accessible back then, which, being pretty good back in the 60s, I don't think his life would seem pretty good today. But for what it's worth, that's what I'm looking forward to learning more about, and I'm excited to have Representative. He describes us all as hosts, but he's been very gracious because he really, as far as I can go, we're going to have this entire thing about all of you here. So thanks for having me and looking forward to the discussion.
Actually, Ben didn't have to stand up, I do. My name is Joe Gallegos, and I'm the chairman of the House District 31, which is, Ben has old Hillsborough, and I have my new Hillsborough, which is north Hillsborough, East Hillsborough, and then the new house on the side there on 26th. And then on the north side of 26th as well, up to Tucker Ridge and through North Flank. So it's a pretty diverse area that I represent. So small businesses, large businesses, farms, and this is a pay post, so pleased to represent that district. Para ustedes que hablan español, si ustedes están con un español y asistente, Jessica está aquí y ella puede hablar con ustedes antes. Y ella puede contar su historia de la ciudadanía de la ciudadanía. So I just wanted to say to those who are more comfortable and Spanish, that my legislative assistant, Jessica, that she is here and she can chat with folks if there were any questions. All right, yeah. And we do have, yes, there is interpretation going on. So we're fully covered. I don't know if we have recovered in Russian or, you know, what. Yeah. The, yeah, the issue is certainly one that is critical to us, but in terms of the state of these representatives and stuff, but certainly has a personal place in my heart as well, as I actually did work on the underfarms when I was a kid, and the underfarms, doing migrant work, we were just reminiscing the old park down in our village down in, what was it, by St. James?
St. James.
St. James.
St. James.
But yeah, those were quite the days, and I agree, I hope things aren't like they were back in those days. But I think we also want to be concerned not just with the issue of wage theft, but really the dynamic. And I think the dynamic really includes then the state of the economy that we have to be concerned about. You know, and if things get tough, they get tough for everybody. And so we also want to recognize the need to support small businesses, and small businesses are where jobs are created. And so we need to sort of think about, as I said, that dynamic of employer and employee, and what's fair and how to really assist in making them the most productive kind of possible. So, thank you.
Janice Nichols here. There she is. Janice, would you stand up? I want to recognize Janice Nichols from PCC. PCC made this possible. And I also think it's very important that we be able to use our state's educational institutions to be able to promote this kind of public policy and to raise awareness in our community of the problems that our community faces. And so, Janice, we are so appreciative of everything that PCC has made possible here, not the least of which, unlike what we're talking about here today, which is oftentimes ripping workers off, we have a prevailing wage rate job right over here in our own backyard, and PCC is expanding and growing, and we're so pleased that wage standards are maintained in the process. So our congratulations to PCC. Oh, we have Representative Michael DeBrome in the back as well. Or do you have to leave? I don't want to put you on the spot. I think it just is.
This is my third event. Is the presentation ready, Mike?
Welcome. So we just actually, as three representatives, went through and talked a little bit, just a 30-second snippet about our concerns of wage theft, and I'd like to, and I'm touching you cold here, if you'd like an opportunity here to just talk about your concerns or interest in that, please feel free.
Okay, sure. Just very quickly, wage theft is an issue of real concern to me. Let me say, first of all, I represent northeast Portland, up to Park Road, House District 45. I'm starting my third term in office. I chair the House Committee on Higher Education and Workforce Development, but my own personal background is a union background, actually. I was the faculty president here at PCC, the PCC District, for 16 years, and during that time, spent a lot of time struggling to get better working conditions for teachers, academics, professionals, especially those who are working part-time. And the issue of wage theft is one that really severely impacts continuing workers, you know, workers who are working part-time, temporarily, seasonally, who are working, you know, on the margins. And, you know, I've been committed ever since I've been in the legislature to try to rectify some of those wrongs, that's why I ran. And I've been working very closely with the Wage Theft Coalition on a package of wage theft bills, which, you know, some of which I'll be sponsoring and others that I'll be, all of them will be working hard on. So I look forward to hearing your concerns as well, any examples, that's part of what I hear.
Next, we're going to have a video on the subject of wage theft, and that will lead into our panel discussion following that, so.
My name is Jesús Madrigán.
My name is Margarito Martínez.
My name is Mark Alom.
My name is Gilberto.
My name is David.
My name is Olaz.
My name is Victor.
My name is Rafael.
My name is Jennifer.
My name is Gustavo.
My name is Leo.
My name is Maria.
Oh, yo soy elso.
My name is Francisco.
My name is Elso Salami.
My name is Láfano Ascon.
My name is Juan.
My name is Ambrolo Salami.
Yo soy víctima del abuso de salarios.
And I have experienced wage theft.
En vez de recibir mi pago, reciben una doble, no indicaron que tenía que comprobar mi salario ni mi papeles, y me dijeron que si no comprobaba, nunca tenían cheque.
I was hired as an independent contractor at this company, but I was treated like an employee.
Y a mí me tomó tres años recuperar el salario cuando lo hago.
I was a victim of the abuse of salary.
I was hired as an independent contractor, but found out that really I was actually an employee. I only got paid about 25 cents an hour by the time all the work was done.
Trabajé con un señor a lavar techos en los apartamentos, trabajé casi como dos meses, y este, ahí nomás me pagaron 1300, me quedaron debiendo 2500.
Me robaron el salario de dos meses de trabajo.
Y trabajé para el patrón, me quedo de ver más de 5000 dólares.
Lo más nos pegó la mitad, la otra mitad no nos pegó nada.
I was hired as an independent contractor, but really I was an employee and robbed of my wages, and still fighting to get them.
No nos pagaron, no se ofrecieron.
Final de cuesta, los quedo debiendo de dos meses el salario.
Me gustaría que pudieras evitar el robo de salario.
Adjusting with the most flexibility here. What we're going to do, the video is working fine, and as we had a couple of hoodoo's, I guess, that have intervened in the process, we're going to try and get that up and running for afterwards, and instead run our panel first. So as I call up the panelists, if you please, please come forward, perhaps we could have some chairs in front of you, I think. We'll need six chairs, I think. Okay, all right, that'll work. Sorry, but they can finish that speaking in the mic's helps a lot. Yes, that's right. So people who are on the panel should probably... All right, is this working? Yes. Our first panelist is Kayla Elmazan. She is an organizer for the Rural Organizing Project. Kayla is originally from Mexico. She is a victim of wage theft herself, and has been involved in issues impacting the Latina community for 15 years, and currently works as an organizer for the Rural Organizing Project. Welcome, Kayla. Thank you for coming. Our next panel member is Jeff Anderson, who is Secretary Treasurer of USW Local 555, that represents grocery and retail merchants throughout Oregon and northwest Washington. And Jeff is the former Chair of the...
Wage... Wage and Hour Commission.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Welcome. We also have from USW Local 555, Bob Marshall, who is a community organizer, and he is presently involved with the USW's campaign against Walmart, happens to be, of course, one of the biggest companies in the United States and one of the biggest violators in terms of wage and hour issues. Our next panelist is Reverend Roberto Arsenia, and he is with the Latin Ministry of the Diocese of Oregon. Welcome very much. Thank you for coming. We have next, Sambino Sardena, who is the former Executive Director of Centro Cultural of Washington County. Welcoming, good morning. And last but not least, we have Michael Dale, who is the Executive Director of Northwest Workers' Justice Project. Michael founded and has been the Executive Director for the past 10 years. He will speak about the legislative efforts of the Oregon Coalition to stop wage theft and address the issues before the legislature this session. Welcome to each of you, and Michael, perhaps it would be easiest if we had you pick this off.
Oh, okay. You're good. So you're going to hear a story about, I guess they wanted... You're going to hear various stories about people that didn't get paid. Wage theft is a whole collection of practices. It could be people that don't get paid at all. It could be people work more than 40 hours a week and they don't get paid overtime. It could be a waitress or other wage staff that the tips that are left for the wage staff don't find their way to the wage staff, but get absorbed by the business. It could be not paying minimum wage, it could be people that are classified as independent contractors, which, there is such a thing as an independent contractor, but many times when people say, oh, you're an independent contractor, actually they're really an employee and wage and hour law apply, but that's sometimes done to avoid having to pay the minimum wage and have to pay overtime and pay workers' comp and that sort of thing. So that happens a lot of different ways. It's very, very common and prevalent in both Oregon and nationwide. There are national studies that say that among low-wage workers, a quarter that work overtime don't get paid overtime. Two-thirds of the workers that were interviewed have subbed wage staff during the previous year. The amount of wages lost totaled approximately 60% of their income. Now, that's national survey data. We don't have similar kind of social science research in Oregon, but we do have some important indicators in Oregon by taking the, if you look at the claims that have been filed with Bureau of Labor and Industries and analyze those. Now, actually, those claims are only a tip of the iceberg, because probably if you have a wage theft problem in Ontario, you probably wouldn't find your way to 800 North Oregon in Portland to be able to find your way home. It just would be lost. Many people don't know where, how to go about filing the wage bank claim, and many people are fearful. They're fearful because they could lose their job, they're fearful of being blacklisted, they're fearful of not working again, they're sort of labeled in their communities as a troublemaker, and in some cases, they're fearful because of their status in the United States, and that might cause them or members of the family problems if they think they have the same thing. So a lot of it's unimportant. But the data that does exist of people who do find their way to bowling and do find that they have, if bowling finds they have a valid claim, we're talking millions of dollars just in that type of gesture. So it's a big problem. What, the first thing I hear about many legislators is, well, isn't this stuff illegal already? And it is. And then the next question is, well, then why do we need any new laws? Don't we just need to enforce the laws that we have? To which I try to explain that the problem is, the laws we have are not working, and it isn't just because Jack Roberts was a bad guy, or Ratavokin just doesn't care about workers. Those were dedicated public servants who did the best they could with the resources they had. But the problem is, there are structural problems in the economy today that help make wage theft more common, that actually make wage theft pay if you're willing to, if you can sleep in that. And so we need to address some of those structural problems. So what are some of those problems? One of the problems is that when, as the economy has changed, we heard a reference from one of the representatives about contingent workers. Contingent workers are all the workers that work as hard as they can, but they don't really have a job. They could be standing on a street corner, they could be working temporary work, they could be working as an independent contractor when they're really not, they could be in a variety of subcontractors, a variety of ways, they're just not really firmly attached to the workforce. With contingent labor schemes, what happens, and I'm going to, I may have made the nod to some of the folks from the Oregon Staffing Agency, the Oregon Staffing Association who are here, I would clearly say that some staffing agencies are like, as many probably are not like this, and probably I see the bottom of the barrel and I don't see, nobody comes in to complain to me because they found a job at an agency where they were really well-paid and well-treated, and I'm sure that happens. But people in that position of vulnerability, where their next day's work depends upon not rocking the boat and keeping the employer happy, makes it very difficult for people to serve wage rights, and that makes for vulnerability. Also, with layers of subcontractors, what happens is, you have a fairly responsible business up here who subcontract, who come subcontract, who subcontract, and by the time you get down here, everybody's taken a piece of the labor dollar, there's not a dollar left. But by the time you get down to the bottom, you're also talking about someone who probably doesn't have the capital to be an employer, can't really stand behind their obligations as an employer if something goes south, can't make good on the wages that are owed. But people up the chain from the bottom all don't know the worker because, you know, somebody else's worker wasn't my worker. Many of those schemes may involve actually employing people in another way. They may be employees of somebody higher up the chain, but the problem is, the law is confusing and difficult, and it's hard for cases to be brought, hard for cases to be won, and hard for cases to be collected off. And then the collected off comes to the next point, which is another reason why this continues to exist, is that you can get a wage judgment, and it may take you two years to do that, but you have to collect it. And typically, when a business is in trouble, what you find is that all of the property of incorporation, all of the property of the principal owners of the corporation, the firstborn child of the principals of the corporation, are all cross-lateralized in the operating moment business heads. And so you can get a judgment, but there's no property to execute against. And so what we're trying to do with this package of bills, in a variety of different ways and different fields, is to create remedies to those structural problems and to try to get information in the hands of workers they can use themselves, not have to depend on the day when workers can fund adequate enforcement, that they can enforce by themselves, on behalf of themselves, the rights that they have, and actually have that enforcement scheme in effect. So that's what we're trying to do, and I'm not going to talk about the details of each of these. I think I could sit here all day, but you wrote them up here if you both have the experience where the rubber is, but...
Thank you very much, Michael. Kayla.
Good morning, everybody. Buenos dias, todos. My name is Kayla, and I'm an organizer for Rural Organizing Project. Part of my job is to go to many different rural areas throughout Oregon and educate workers about wage theft, and also to train them on how to prevent it, how to protect themselves. And I've heard so many different stories that talk about many different ways that wage theft happens. And, you know, it's really sad to see those stories reflect, you know, I experienced wage theft too when I was younger, and it's sad to see people dealing with the same, with the same role that I did when I was younger. I was, well, one of my many experiences with wage theft was when, back in 2002, and I was living in Deadels, Oregon, and I was going to the local community college, and I was working for a local restaurant, and the owner had a bigger restaurant in eastern Oregon. So for the first month or two, I did get paid, you know, I got my paycheck every 15 days. But then about the, at the end of the second or the beginning of the third month, I didn't get my check, and the next pay period came, and I didn't receive my check either. So one of those days when the owner was at the restaurant, I asked him what was going on with my check, and... Can you still hear me? Okay. And then he told me that I had to fill out an application so I could get my paycheck. And I told him that I did, that that was the reason I got hired, because I turned in my application. It's like, okay, I'll look into it. It's like, okay, I'll look into it. So another pay period came, and I didn't get paid again. So I called him and I asked him what was going on, that I needed my money, and he said to stop bothering him, and he had a really bad attitude. And, you know, a few days later, I just didn't go to work anymore because I realized that he wasn't gonna pay me at all. So I kept, I kept going back to the restaurant and I kept calling him to get my money, and he was always really rude, and then after a while, he wasn't there anymore for some reason. So I was very desperate because it was during the summer break, so I was saving money to move to Corvallis, to continue with my education, but also to pay the deposit for my new apartment. And I just didn't have that money anymore because he was not paying me. So I was really desperate, and I was crying because I didn't know what to do, I was really young at the time. So I called my mom, that was the only way that I could get some consolation from the whole thing that I was dealing with. So I talked to my mom, you know, and she asked me for his phone number, and I didn't want to give it to her because I'm like, “Oh, well, now I'm in trouble,” or I made a good reference. So, so finally, I gave my mom his phone number. She called him right away, she told him that she was my lawyer, and that he would get in. And then if he didn't pay me, that he was gonna get in big trouble. So about an hour later, I received a phone call from him, and he was really pissed, and he told me in three days to go in and get my paycheck. So I did, on the third day, I went in, he was waiting for me. He threw the check at me, he tossed me out big time, and he told me that he didn't want to see me ever again. Of course, I didn't want to see him, I was like, “Oh, you didn't.” But, you know, and that, and that was just the second time that I, well, after so many times of dealing with wage theft, only two times that I asked for my paycheck after dealing with people for so long, I finally got paid, while the rest of the times I didn't. And the thing was also that, you know, like Michael was saying, you know, I didn't want to rock the boat, I wanted to be employed, I wanted to have a good reference. But I did not know that it was illegal, I just saw that it was unfair. And I didn't learn that actually that was illegal until I started working on the campaign. And it, you know, it's just so common. I, I know so many people that have dealt with it, that are owed thousands of dollars, but just a few hundred dollars like I did, that was making such a big difference in my life as a student. So I really appreciate that our representatives are working to protect workers and to punish lawyers that don't pay. Thank you.
It sounds like to me that the problem in the other cases you're talking about is you didn't have a good lawyer, like, you know.
Or an alternative bar to get representation.
Hi, I'm Jeff Harrison, Secretary of Treasury of United Food Commercial Workers. We're representing 20,000 members in Oregon and southwest Washington. A little side note, House District 29 is special to me because my great-grandfather was elected in 1900 to serve in the 1901 session, a former. And I'm now learning that Mr. Under may be somehow related to my great-grandfather. So who knows, Washington's all right. We settle a little Dutch community of Verborg, so it seems like there's a connection I'm hearing. I come at this in a couple of ways. The retail industry, and only recently did we understand now the employment statistics that retail is the number one industry in Oregon. I don't view that as a positive. I'm not jumping up and down because that tells me family wage jobs that are secure with full family and benefits are declining in retail, and services expanding and mostly underrepresented. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the represented side and some of the problems we have, but that tells me it's much more exacerbated in the unrepresented environment. There was a time, not too short, a big grocery chain, you recognize it, I won't say the name, in fact, I'm not going to say the names of these chains, but you wouldn't think that this happens. But they had a Hawaiian week sales, once a year, it was Hawaiian days in this chain, and they would decorate the whole store and spend all night in a big party. Now, this was not just one store, this was every store in the chain, over a thousand stores. And it was completely unpaid. You were required to party from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the grocery industry today. And that's theft, that's wage theft at a, at a high scale. But it just kind of goes on in word that the grocery industry, part of retail, is the most efficient industry in the U.S. economy today. But by that, it operates on a penny on the dollar net profit. After all said and done, a penny on the dollar. And the one area that is told by all grocery managers, the one controllable cost that you can affect is labor. And so it's another grocery chain, you would recognize it, every once in a while you see the ads, another grocery chain had another way to save money. Load up the work on the employees and say, “You must get this list done today,” knowing on purpose, there is no way you could get that list done. Forcing employees to work off the clock on a routine and regular basis. Now, these are union stores. These are where people have rights and we have enforcement provisions. And yet it was happening, it still happens in many ways today. So what they would do, and as, as an example, another grocery chain would have meat cutters to evade being caught working off the clock. Come in at 4:00 AM, sign in at 6:00. So as a union field representative, hearing this, I showed up at the store at 3:30 AM. And this became a cat and mouse game because the pressure was on these employees to make what they would term as cut and gross. A meat cutter, go to any event, meat cutter. What is cut and gross? Cut and gross means that you're making your sales and your labor. Nobody can predict exactly when you and the audience will go in a grocery store and shop. We don't know our sales from one minute to the next year of the year. We can try to guess, we have the best algorithm systems that pick up trends. But in fact, you're finding lots of people working off the clock in union stores. Now, when I chaired the Wage and Hour Commission for about nine years, I was on the commission for nine years and chaired it for about four of those years, we found that it was much more prevalent in the non-union, unrepresented, including not giving employees breaks, not giving employees lunches, very common. That's theft of time, that's also theft of energy. The employers use a term called theft of time. If you are not working and you're clocked in, you've stole something from them. We would say conversely what is true is if you're having people work, not paying them, you're stealing from them. That's theft. So it's prevalent in the retail industry today. And, you know, the Labor Commissioner appreciated Michael's comments. During the time we were, I was on the commission, I watched the enforcement component of the labor budget just being evaporated. I would say bowling today is probably one-third of what it was in the mid-'90s. So there is not an enforcement, there is a, a system that says it's complaint-driven, that's the new terminology. If it's complaint, if you make a complaint, they'll investigate. There is no enforcement. So you're, it is in the employer's interest to violate the law if they're a bad person who can, can sleep at night. They're incentivized by the fact that there's no enforcement. It's a complaint that would drive an enforcement, and then it would be a lengthy process in an underfunded instance. So we are very interested in this issue because as much as I can describe this as in a union environment, union-represented employers, you're going to hear from another speaker who's going to talk about something underrepresented, and it's very pervasive and common. And I gotta think that in food service beyond retail, it's much more pronounced, agriculture much more pronounced. So it's a problem. And frankly, with companies and consolidation, it's taken money out of Oregon's economy. It's not just leaving it to some few small contractors, very large companies are taking this to Wall Street, out of our economy. Thank you.
My name's Bob, I've been organizing, organizing unions for workers for a long time and doing a lot of community support. Currently, I'm working on Walmart, and as folks probably know, there are 17 Walmart new locations scheduled to come in to the greater Beaverton, Tiger, Vancouver, Oregon area. Wage theft takes a lot of different forms. It's not only in agriculture and small restaurants, et cetera, as people have said, some of the big corporations also practice it. Walmart has perfected it to an art practically. Just a couple of lists, couple of listings of things they've done in 2001, it was a class action suit on gender discrimination for paying women less, they had to come up with some money to make that straightened out. 2006, they paid $78 million to 187,000 workers for failing to pay for off-the-clock work. On appeal, the award was raised to 188 million. In 2008, again, apparently they didn't learn their lesson, Walmart agrees to pay 54 million for a class action suit for off-the-clock work. Two weeks later, they agreed to pay 64 million in 63 class action suits for unpaid work. Not learning their lesson again, in 2009, Walmart agreed to pay 40 million to settle a class action suit for 87,000 employees for off-the-clock work. Still again, 2010, the same thing, paid 86 million in a class action suit for 232,000 workers. And it goes on and on and on. What I see happening in the industry is it, it's almost like these corporations are like a mafia family with the chart of subcontractors and subcontractors, and it kind of disappears into nowhere, right? The current strikes that Walmart just had around the country started in subcontractor warehouses in LA and Chicago where people were fired if they spoke up, they didn't get a break, they didn't get water, they were ripped off for their wages, and workers couldn't take it anymore. And these are workers that don't have a union, but they have the right to act in concert, protected by federal law. But we all know, in any social struggle, you need to wrap the community and the power of the people around the law to make it really, really, to get to justice. Walmart, as I said, and many corporations, I think what they're doing now, the way I'm defining it, is they're socializing the cost and privatizing the profit, right? There's an article here in the newspaper a while back, the headline is, “Walmart Employees Get More State-Subsidized Medical Care and Food Stamps Than Any Other Oregon Business.” So my mom's taxes, my taxes, your taxes, Jeff's taxes, his brother's taxes are subsidizing Walmart's profits while they rip the workers off for their wages. So frankly, if I was a mafia crime family person and wanted to set up a scam, organize a corporation to get the maximum from Bangladesh where textiles are made for Walmart to Portland, that's the way I'd set it up, the way Walmart behaves. And speaking of Bangladesh, you probably all recently heard about the subcontractor to the subcontractor to the subcontractor that had, making textiles for Walmarts in Bangladesh like for Ralph Lauren and many of the other big companies, all the exits were blocked, probably to keep out the union organizers, but also the margin of profit is so low, those folks that are the subcontractors can't provide safety. So what have they tried to do in Bangladesh is get the Bangladeshi government to give their money to provide safety. What happened in one of those textile factories? 113 workers burned to death where Walmart makes their products. So in our community, there are people wearing shirts that were made by workers that burned to death because Walmart doesn't have the morality to pay people correctly or to treat them fairly. It's outrageous. I guess the last thing I would say is, I've started to talk to people about, I think as a community, we're learning, we've learned that the salmon have to be sustainable, they're connected to the water, they're connected to the trees, we're learning as a society that we have to have a sustainable environment. What I think we need to learn as a society is we need a sustainable environment for workers and children in our community. And so that workers who work at Albertson's or Safeway or Walmart can send their daughter to nursing school, or pay for their son's saxophone lessons, or whatever they want. We need to be sustainable as human beings. And to sum up, I'd just like to say that the position of the United Food Commercial Workers is, as far as immigration goes, the people that get ripped off, who come to our country looking for a better life, for us, I think for all of us in this room, there's no such thing as an illegal human being. That's outrageous. And the last thing I'd like to say is, when I first came to Oregon, about 15 years ago, I went to the county fair, and there was a union table, they had a button that said something I always remember, I think about it every day, workers' rights are human rights. That's the end of the story.
Roberto Asiniégen, I'm the Latino missionary for the Diveses of Oregon. And I'm thankful to be here and try out my sermon for tomorrow. And we are talking about justice, I think here, Bible love is justice. And just, and acting justly is accord, is acting according to the law. But the law, the norms that we have in society has to change as we are here, and it has to change because the relationship in society is changing, the economy is changing, the relationship in the economy is changing, so those laws have to change. And that's why we are here as members of the community, searching for the right action, responding to the need of a changing attitudes, speaking for the ones who have not been heard. And I'm glad that we, there are so many different members of our community here present, representatives. We don't want to load all these things on you, but, but in a way, you decide that the moment that you want to run for this place, this seat, that's a responsibility that you have for the community. So the deeds of justice are, according to the Bible, liberation, health, victory. And one of the passages says, “They sell the rachas for silver, and the needy for a pair of sandals. They trample the heads of the poor, as upon the dust of the ground, and deny justice to the oppressed.” And then another part says, “While the Lord is required for you to act justly and to love mercy and to work humbly with God. The poor and the needy search for water, but there is none; their tongues are parched with thirst; but I, the Lord, will answer them.” Yahweh, God is calling us and calling the powerful, the one who has power, that they must respect the right of the poor and the weak. Hear this word, “You who oppress the poor and crush the needy.” And then the Bible, and Christ also, he, he names people. I know that we are in a society, we are so politically, trying to be politically correct, socially correct, and we try to be correct, and we don't say what is the reality. Because maybe I, we can offend Walmart, or we can offend somebody. But, I mean, it's, it's so many people that we've heard that they, they experience this thing. But we don't have a list. We have a list of restaurants that don't, that don't serve good food. We have critics for this, but we don't have a list of people who are not paying the right Learn to do right, see justice, encourage the oppressed, defend the cause of the fearless, sorry, the fatherless, plead the case of the widow. And then it was Christ coming later on and said, “Ode to you, Ode to you, teachers of the law and Pharisees, you have neglected the more important matters of the law, justice, mercy, faithfulness.” How can we recognize who's the children of God? How can we recognize who's the children of God? And, and John said, "Anyone who does not act with justice is not a child, children of God." So we are here, and I'm not, I'm not trying to unload a lot of, bunch of texts from the Bible, but if we really, if we really believe in somebody, the first thing in God or, or the first thing that we have to do is justice. We heard, human rights, respect of the dignity of every human being is really important and that's why it keeps us society. When we don't do that, we are breaking down society. We are breaking down the way we live, we are breaking the relationship among us. And when I talk about justice, I'm not talking about the given to each one what is theirs. Because we can have so many things and, and say, well, only for you is this, and get happy with that. And many times, we as a church, we are, we are part of that problem and encouraging that problem, just be happy. Someday in the elder life, you will receive your reward. And, and then we contradict ourselves when we, we pray and we say, "Lord, your kingdom come, the kingdom of justice." So we have to start here, somewhere we have to start to build in that kingdom. "Bless those who hunger for thirst and justice, for justice, for they will be filled." So we are here again, so, and we are here as members of the community, searching for the right action, responding to the need of changing of attitudes, speaking for the ones who cannot be heard. And I would say, "The loving God who is in heaven, the howling of your name echoed through the universe. The way of justice be followed by..."